It's a little after 6:30 and we'll start the meeting off. Looks like we have our regular members here tonight, the code enforcement officer and our associate member, Peter. So with all the regular members being here, the voting members tonight will be Keith and Bruce and Brian and Tom and myself. And Peter, if somebody gets sick or has to leave, then you'll be up. Okay, if we look at the agenda, are there any adjustments to the agenda? Did any of the board members have?
Looks good to me.
I move we accept the agenda as presented.
It's been moved and seconded. We accept the agenda as presented. All those in favor? Five zero zero. Okay, we have to elect our chair, vice-chair and secretary for this year and up to the town meeting next year. We do this every meeting after the town meeting.
I nominate George Kerker for chair.
Second.
It's been, is there any other nominations? Seeing none, we'll close the nominations for chair. All those in favor? Four, one, zero.
I'll second.
Yep, we got a second there. All those in favor? It's four. You abstaining? And for secretary, I'll nominate Brian.
Second.
All those in favor? Slide four, zero, one. Okay, we have now a completeness review of the prime preliminary plan application for David and Sandra Sinclair for revisions to Ryan's Pass subdivision. It's basically 12 new lots and 199,819 square foot open space. And we have a representative tonight.
Amy, why don't you, I'm sorry, grab that mic or, you'll have to turn it on. It's on the back. Should be an off and on switch.
Red light.
Sorry, what was your last name?
Young, Y-O-U-N-G.
Thank you.
And the first name is A-I-M-E-E. Just to be difficult. Well, this is a request for an amendment to create Ryan's Pass Phase Three. Obviously, you guys are familiar with all the previous phases, modifications, changes, and all the other fun things we've done. Basically, we are taking advantage of the recently, or soon to be recently completed Serenity Pass in our way that were part of the Phase Two amendment and adding 12 new lots to the existing road fringe. So there will be no new road associated with this Phase Three. All the lots are minimum 60,000 square feet with, I think David requested that we had a minimum of 200 feet of road fringe, but I think the town minimum is 150. And so they're kind of scattered a little bit in relation to what, where the existings are, but we did the count continuation, starting from the previous 16 lots. And the addition of open space in the center here, per the request of the existing homeowners' association, will be almost 200,000 square feet of unbuiltable land that will be dedicated to the homeowners' association upon approval of Phase Three.
Okay, thank you, Amy. I think Randy, you and I went over this and asked for some additional items, which I think Amy has presented us with. So, right. So we all straight on those couple items. Does anyone else, any of the voting members, have any additional items that they want straightened out before we continue? Bruce?
If we're going down through the checklist, right?
Yeah. Well, why don't you pull out what you need? Turn your mic on when you get a chance.
I just, I don't have any.
You don't have any?
If we're going down through the checklist.
Yeah, just through the checklist.
You asked about calling this.
Brian, did you have anything?
No questions now.
Tom?
I had a couple later.
Go ahead.
No, I'll do it later.
Oh, we're not going to do it tonight?
No.
I only ask you to, why the?
Put your mic on, please.
Why do the space between, I can't remember what lot it is now, but on our way, it's quite a space between the two lots, right there.
Does he got us too?
It's good reason to know him.
What was the reason?
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no other problems with the application, then we'll need a motion to say that the application is complete as presented.
Still moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the board determined the application is complete. All those in favor? The next thing I want to do is determine if the board wants a public hearing. It would be at our next meeting on the ninth of April. I'd like that in the form of a motion, yes or no.
I move that we do have a public hearing at the next meeting of the planning board in April.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we have a public hearing at the April 9th meeting. All those in favor? Five zero zero. One other question, do you want an onsite visit? If you do, we'll have to schedule it at a regular meeting.
What if we do it independently?
Can't do it independently. Is it necessary?
We didn't do the other one.
I've been up there several times, you've been up there, Randy's been up. So that's independent. But for me, we'll walk over before the subdivision.
I've been up there.
All right.
I don't see the need for a meeting, a site review.
An onsite?
Yeah, onsite, thank you.
Okay, I'll make that a motion that we don't have an onsite.
A motion we not have an onsite review.
Second on that motion.
Yeah, Tom did.
Okay.
Tom did.
It's even better.
All those in favor? Five zero zero. Okay, Amy, that should do it for tonight. April 9th is the next meeting, which will be a preliminary meeting. If everything goes well in the preliminary meeting, we'll try and have a final meeting, yeah, at that time.
You asked a question about, on boundaries, that's what I thought we were doing through this, but the random monitoring.
Yeah, I noticed that. What did she write here?
I don't think she did.
Randy, did we just get the ordinance? Yes, it says in here that it will be placed on the ground and no lot will be sold until the morning of the place. Isn't that, isn't that? Yeah, it's in the subdivision.
Yeah, we just got it.
See that?
No, I'm pretty sure it's post, post-legal plan. Don't worry, this job is long.
Linda, are you going to talk for Mark? Will you be talking for Mark?
I'm going to give some comments.
Okay.
And then I told him, you better write it for me.
The fees have been paid. I just gave you, the butters have been also notified. I've given you the sign-off sheet from the town staff. And what Mark's looking for is addition of an office and storied slash security room area. It's to go along with the October of 2006 approved site plan. I guess that's it. On the site plan ordinance on page seven, number 10, it says the planning board has a right to waive submissions, requirements and review criteria related to the elements of the development. So I'm going to make a motion now that we waive everything except for number E, which is location, size of proposed new buildings.
Second.
And all the other ones we can waive because they're on either the 2006 application or on the new application. It's been moved and seconded that we waive those. All those in favor? Five zero zero. Mark, do you want to better explain what you want to do rather than what I had said?
Well, we put up the initial building in 2008, was 2,000 square feet. And at the time, it's 40 by 50, and the intention was to add on the other half, which would be bring it up to 80 by 50. Auction business has changed considerably in 10 years, and the number of people that attend auctions have gone down. And from running general auctions, we're more into running very specialized auctions now. So when we used to put 100 people in the seats, now if we put 35 to 50, we've got a full auction. So we've decided we don't need the other half of the building, but we do need other work areas for what we do there. So in the front of the building, we want to add an office and storage area, which you've got, should have there, 440 feet. And that's where our cashier is currently sitting out on the floor, unprotected at a table, and she'll be inside of a locked room for more security. And we're going to have a safe and shelving and everything in there for what we need to do in there. On the back half, we had already been approved for a kitchen and two baths by the code enforcement officer. And on the other side of that, back of the building, and what you see there in the plan is for a, that's going to be a security room and with a outside loading door there for pickups and an area that we're doing inside the hall now, we'll be back in there where we can have better security on what's being handled. The parking and everything is pretty much the same as the 2006 plan. And I believe the code enforcement officer has the, you know, the copies of the septic and drainage field, which was put up behind the building in part of the area that would have been the big addition that we're not going to be building anymore. So that's pretty much what I have.
Thanks, Mark. Let's open it up to the board for questions. Tom, can we start with you?
The only question I guess I have is it's going to be similar construction to what's there.
Yeah, it'll be on, both additions will be on slab, the same type of slab that was built for the original building tied into it. It'll be frame construction on two by sixes. And the addition in the front will be wooden shingle, because that's the area where the public can see. And the back addition will be steel siding on it. And we're going to put a steel roof on the back addition, and it's still open as to whether we put a steel roof or asphalt shingle roof on the office addition in the front.
Okay, thank you. That's all I got.
I'm good.
Bruce?
Good.
Okay, let's open it up to the public and open the public hearing at this time. Okay, not seeing any questions from the public, we'll close the hearing. And if the board members would go to the review criteria. It's on page seven. I think we'll find quite a few of these really aren't applicable to the addition. Okay, the first standard of approval is preserve and enhance the landscape.
I'll move that's not applicable.
Okay, Tom has made the motion that there's no change.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor? Five zero zero. Third one is vehicle access.
I don't think it's going to have any additional vehicles. I'm not sure that's applicable. What he's got is adequate for what he's got there now. And this is meant for storage and office space and whatever, so nothing's going to draw extra people in. I say it's not applicable.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the vehicle access is not applicable. All those in favor of that? Slide zero zero. The fourth is parking and circulation.
I'll move that's not applicable.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor? Five zero zero. The fifth one is surface water drainage.
I'll move that's been met, a small enough addition that it's not going to have an impact.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that surface water drainage has been met. Very little development than was in 2006. All those in favor? Five zero zero. Existing utilities.
I'll move that's not applicable. There's no real change, demand on utilities.
Is there a second?
Couple extra lights, maybe?
Well, you got bathrooms.
That's true, yeah.
Yeah, that's been approved previously, kitchen and two bathrooms, and there's underground utilities serving it from the house. Okay, so that's previously been approved? It's been approved.
It's not bringing in more people to use the bathrooms.
They're just using them and going to use them inside instead of out.
I'm sorry, that's my fault. I didn't mention that that is under the 25 percent addition to an existing plan, and that can be ruled upon by the code enforcement officer.
Okay, so that's.
It's not applicable.
Yeah, so Randy did okay the bathroom addition.
Yeah, we had one last one to all process and put in a new subject system during the last year.
And we, I think it's a 2,000 gallon capacity. There's no possible way we'll ever fill that thing up. So I'll second Tom's motion.
Okay, Tom, you had moved that it's not applicable.
It's not applicable.
All those in favor? Five zero zero.
I'll set on the other side.
No, that's all right. Advertising features of the development. There's no new lighting or signing that's.
No, if we decide eventually to redo the sign, it will come in on another application, but right now it's the same, same old sign. I move it's not applicable.
I'll second.
It's removed and seconded that advertising features are not applicable in this case. All those in favor? Five zero zero. Special features of the development. Basically, exposed storage areas. This may not be applicable either.
Whatever you have outside now will be inside after these two things are added, basically.
Well, not necessarily, but most of the stuff that'll be in these storage rooms is messing up the inside looks of the main building, and now it'll be out of sight, chairs and tables and everything we're not using will be, people can't see them. That's the plan. We don't have that much, you know, if something is, if we get a vehicle or something that's sold outside, then it's taken away, so there really isn't much outside.
I'll move it's not applicable.
Second. It's removed and seconded that special features of the development are not applicable. All those in favor? Five zero zero. Exterior lighting.
No change, right? No, there's, we may move a couple of lights around on the building, but there won't be any, nothing new's coming in, just some exterior lighting for the public to see us.
It's been moved and seconded that exterior lighting is not applicable in this case. All those in favor? Five zero zero. Emergency vehicle access.
I move that's not applicable because we don't have any additional vehicles.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that emergency vehicle access is not applicable in this case. It was signed off by the.
Right, yeah.
By the town also, that there's no change. All those in favor? Five zero zero. Number 11, municipal services.
I move that's been met because we've got the sign-offs from the town staff, appropriate town staff.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that municipal services has been approved. All those in favor? Five zero zero. The next one's water pollution.
I'll move that's not applicable.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that water pollution is not applicable in this development. All those in favor? Five zero zero. On-site water supply.
I'll move that's been met.
Second. Is it really applicable that there's no water supply to the.
Well, he has bathrooms, he's putting new bathrooms in.
It's on town water.
I'm sorry.
This will have no water in what we're asking for tonight, but there's town water on to them.
Okay, so it's not applicable.
For the already current. Okay, then I'll second that.
Okay, the motion was not applicable.
Right.
All those in favor? Five zero zero. Soil erosion.
I'll move that's not applicable.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that soil erosion standard is not applicable in this development. All those in favor? Five zero zero. Subtlety disposal. Not applicable.
I'll move it's not applicable.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded that this is not applicable. All those in favor? Five zero zero. Adverse effect on wildlife, natural areas.
I'll move it's not applicable.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that adverse effect is not applicable in this case. All those in favor? Five zero zero. Financial and technical capacity.
I move that's been met, he's been in the business for years.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that financial and technical capacity has been met. All those in favor? Five zero zero. Air quality.
I'll move it's not applicable.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that that is not applicable. All those in favor? Five zero zero. This time I'll take a motion on the complete application.
So you've got all the things affect.
All right, let's take a motion on all the, on all the.
Performance standards, yeah.
18 performance standards. Have they all been?
I move that the applicant has met all the applicable 18 performance standards.
I'll second.
18 and 19.
I think it's 18.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the applicant has met all applicable standards. All those in favor? Five zero zero. How about a motion now on the complete application?
Move to approve the application as presented.
Second.
And there are no conditions.
No condition, with no conditions. It's been moved that the application be approved as presented with no conditions. All those in favor? Five zero zero. Okay, Mark, if we can find an application, assign that. Randy, while we're signing that, do you have anything in your report for tonight?
Just a couple of work processes that I'm working on. There's been a couple of items that have been brought to my attention, two various ones, and they have been let us send out to them. One is a violation of a business, doing business without coming to the planning board. And the other one is a violation of the junkyard license. I'm still working with those processes, but those are the two things that are major on board right now as far as violation or anything like that goes. I have no new applications that have come in at this point, so it's still in the process of growing, I guess, for the.
As soon as we get an application for you, give us another minute or so. Thanks, Mark. Thank you. Good luck. And I understand you have an auction coming up?
Saturday.
Five zero zero. Okay, Mark, if we can find an application, we'll sign that. Randy, while we're signing that, do you have anything in your report for tonight?
Just a couple of work processes that I'm working on. There's been a couple of items that have been brought to my attention, two various ones, and there have been letters sent out to them. One is a violation of a business, doing business without coming to the planning board. And the other one is a violation of the junkyard license. I'm still working with those processes, but those are the two things that are major on board right now as far as violation or anything like that goes. I have no new applications that will come in at this point, so it's still in the process of growing, I guess, for the year.
As soon as we get an application for you, give us another minute or so. Yeah, that's fine. Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
And good luck. And I understand you have an auction coming up?
Saturday.
This Saturday?
At the Lions Club.
At the Lions Club, not at your place?
May 19th at our place.
Changing scenery.
We got those trains Saturday. Do you have a snow date?
Yeah.
A snow date? I hope not, we might have to need a snow date in May the way it's going. Oh, I know.
Saturday's going to be nice and sunny.
Thank you, Mark, and Linda, thank you.
Only snow going a week, some kids can get out of school.
If we get to stay around for four hours, dump all mail, skip a little sale, we'd be all right.
Okay, at this time, open to the public. Did you folks have something?
I have a question. At one of the meetings in the past few months with respect to the road, Sandy Ridge Lane and the subdivision, there was some question if it was built to the standard that you originally required. Did you resolve that?
Not to my knowledge. Which road were you speaking about?
Well, there was a question if the roads were built to subdivision standards, and I think you were going to require test borings. I can't remember exactly, and I should have gone back and tried to watch a video. I didn't know if you'd resolved it, made a determination.
You're talking about all the roads, not just my road down the bottom? The new one, one that goes in?
Correct, the existing Sandy Ridge and Serenity.
Yeah, it's all the others, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, that's another situation that had nothing to do with the planning board and the application that was submitted at that time. So, the planning board can't make them do anything about those particular roads. Some of the members of the first application wanted it turned over to the town, those roads, and before it would be turned over to the town, the town, not the planning board, requested that it be built to the town's specifications, and we have no jurisdiction as a planning board to enforce that.
So, Sandy Ridge and Serenity are built as approved as was expected by the planning board with those initial approvals?
I.
Don't think they were, they were inspected at all. That was the catch 22 with the existing town manager at the time, and what was going on there, he did not go up and inspect it because it was private property. The people building the road and stuff did not invite him up to it again, and so they were not inspected when they were put down. The one that is in this addition or this subdivision, no, has been inspected and will be built to the subdivision standard, that's a condition before any lots sold. So, that one is covered. And the other one, and where that's going.
So, it just is what it is, and, okay.
Yeah, there may be, you know, a suit one way or another from the property owners. I think people, original one over there, Ryan's Pass, they want something done, they want something down by the brook and the culvert, but it's not planning board.
Okay, okay. And I wasn't, I was just curious if a determination had been made, because I knew it was a question at one point, so.
Yeah, thank you. Yes. Yeah, thanks, thanks really for asking, because a lot of people don't realize that. Was that all you wanted to ask? Okay, fine.
I just wanted to, I just don't think it should have been resolved, as, as part of the base too.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Okay, if there's no other business, we'll close the meeting.
So, who?
All in favor?